Council meeting to order.
Could you please call rule?
Councilmember. Councilmember.
I'm trying to turn it on. Now we can't turn it on.
Okay. Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Jane Brahm. Councilmember Mike Sero.
That's right, here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Grass.
Here.
Deputy Mayor El Jenki. Mayor Jim Pearman.
Here. And we'll call the meeting to order now with appearances. Is there anyone who'd like to address the City Council? Please come forward with your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Tove Land. I live at 6939 Southeast Allen. I am here about the two-tier pricing in the Parks and Rec catalog. And my non-resident classmates are not here because they figure you don't care, you don't have to. But I'm a resident, and I care. Now, I'm only going to speak to the French classes. There's two. I don't know anything about any other class or any other activity. But I'm assuming you're aware that we are now charging non-residents a fee to join the classes. In -- there's two French classes this year. They had to combine up the beginning and the intermediate because there were not enough people to run separate classes. And there would be enough residents this year to run that combined class. The advanced class, there are not enough residents. There would not have been all year long. There would not be an advanced class if it were not for the non-residents. We're almost all retired people. And it is a battle every quarter to get enough people to run the French class. We travel, we get sick, and annoyingly, we occasionally die. So we beat the bushes to get enough people. And we do not want to combine the advanced class with the beginning intermediate. It would be like asking you folks to go back to eighth grade. We don't want to explore that. So...
Might be an improvement.
So you gave us a great opportunity to discuss this current civic events in French. And we tried to figure out what that $10 from the non-residents covered for French was it. And we checked with the instructor. She did not get any increased money from the $10. We explored maybe more to swipe the credit card? Hmm, no. Costs the same amount to swipe my credit card. Then we thought, well, maybe that's a charge for crossing the moat. But you know what? Everybody's out there crossing the moat for the same price. Maybe the use of the parking lot at the community center. But you know what? All the visitors to the island can use that parking lot for free. Maybe the bathroom. But you know what? Nobody's checking where we live to use the bathroom. So we're -- everybody paid this quarter, even the non-residents. Or nobody knew this was coming. But we figured out French class, all the French classes are worth about $2,000 a quarter to the city of Mercer Island. Now, you would've lost $800 a quarter without the advanced French class. And all my non-resident friends that I sit there and embarrassed about this two-tier pricing, oddly enough, they're real bright, and they can count. And they all know there'd be no class without them because there aren't enough residents to run the class. So they -- and if you include the beginning and the intermediate class with this, excuse me, it's worth about $2,000 a quarter to the city of Mercer Island. When we have a heating or a cooling problem in the morning in our classroom, we pick our stuff up and we go to another classroom down the hall in another heating zone. And you know what? There isn't a classroom that isn't available to us because at 9:00 on Monday morning, Mercer Island residents are not beating down the doors of the community center to get in. So we are really kind of gravy to the city. Now, I have a solution, only for the French classes or whatever else. We used to have some Spanish classes, some Chinese classes. We don't this time. Presumably, we might again. I don't know if the problem is lack of instructor or lack of resident interest. But you could exempt daytime language classes from this $10 gouge, which really is what it is. I don't know if we're going to try to balance the budget on the back of the non-residents.
I need you to start wrapping up your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for coming. Would anyone else like to address the City Council?
Good evening. I am Mark Clausen. I live at 6107 Southeast 32nd Street. And I'm here about a topic that the council has addressed before, and I'm here to report some progress. I brought some handouts for you. There's been ongoing discussion about the conflict between motorists and bicyclists and pedestrians on island roads. And a number of us who both cycle and, well, walk and drive have decided that we need to have dialogue that exists independent of what might happen through a car window or off a bicycle seat. And so we have set up what we call a road safety forum. And James Mason of the city was kind enough to put this poster together with -- and that's what the handout that you have. But it's set for April 26th from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Mercer Island Library. I would like to invite each of you to attend, and of course, anybody, any members of the public that are interested in this. We are going to have representative of the Mercer Island Police, at least one attorney with knowledge of the relationships of the parties as it pertains to the rules of the road, some representatives of the bicycling community, and hopefully, we'll get a number of motorists. But we would like to get a good dialogue going, and the objective will be to come up with a consensus on what an appropriate code of conduct is. There have been other cities and counties that have done this in other areas, and I think it has been productive in giving people an idea of what ought to be expected of someone else you're sharing the road with and what you should, the standards to which you should apply yourself when you're using a car or a bike or walking on the island. So I appreciate if you all would consider this and communicate it to others who might be interested. Thank you.
Mark, excuse me. Thank you for your efforts on this. We had conversations earlier, and thank you for following through and putting in real energy, and good work.
Well, thanks.
Well, I'd like to echo what Jim just said. This is something the council had asked for, and you've gone to a lot of trouble to put this together, and you deserve our thanks for doing that. And I'm going to attend, and I want to particularly invite fellow Councilmember El Jenki to attend with me, and the two of us can have a share-the-road experience there.
Be delighted to, if I'm in town. And one question, though. Are we limited by quorum rules in terms to only three of us?
I think, Katie, I think they can attend any meeting as long as they're not discussing deliberate.
Right.
Deliberating any...
Don't sit next to each other.
And we won't ask you all to vote either. Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Any other appearances? Seeing none, we have a special presentation tonight, and we have Bruce Fletcher to introduce a special citizen of our community.
Good evening. Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation. But tonight, I'm kind of coming here as a proud Mercer Island Rotarian. And in the room, we have a couple more. Chief Holmes is a Rotarian, and Councilmember Mike Sero. Every year, and this was the 39th year, a half marathon happens in this town. And I tell you, when nearly 4,000 healthy, fabulous people come to town, I'm proud because they get to see my parks, my trails, the community center, and the absolute gorgeous views of this island. But I would like to introduce the Race Director, Dawn May, who not only works year-round for this, and it's a lot of work, but she volunteers. So Dawn?
Thanks, Bruce. I actually just wanted to come here today and inform you of how hard the city works to help us put this event on. The police are out early in the morning. Parks and Rec guys are out really early, putting up barricades, making sure the trails are perfect. Youth and Family Services help out. And without the help of these individuals, our event would not be successful. So I brought along a friend. This is Jeff Orswell. He is our Events Director. He works with a lot of cities around this area, and I wanted to just give him a minute to also thank you because really, we could not do this event without you, and we really appreciate the efforts. We're going on 40 next year and hope to continue our relationship.
Good evening. As Dawn said, my name is Jeff Orswell. I'm a self-employed special event producer in Bellevue, and we work with Rotary Clubs and other nonprofit organizations. We produce about 25 events a year, large-scale outdoor events. We've been providing event planning and production support for the Mercer Island Rotary Club on their half marathon for the last four years. And each year during the wrap-up meeting, I, you know, thank profusely the city contacts that are in there for the support that they provide. And this year, you know, we felt it was appropriate to actually come address you folks and tell you that the support that the City Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department, and the Fire Department in particular provide for this event is unparalleled. As Dawn mentioned, we work with Seattle and Bellevue and Renton and a number of communities in Western Washington, and it's really just, your support is head and shoulders above what we get on other events in those municipalities. And it really starts with Bruce and Chief Holmes and Chief Tubbs and trickles down. And the work ethic and professionalism that we get on this event is unparalleled and unmatched. And so thank you for your continued support of the Rotary Club and this very important event.
Great.
You should be really proud. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This is one of our signature events. Clearly, it's getting that way. For us, how many runners do you -- I'm going to ask you a few numbers, maybe you have them. How many runners do you get now? How many walkers? How many volunteers? The size of the event now?
Last year, we -- well, this year, we had almost 3750. Last year was an anomaly. We had almost 5,000 participants. So it was a huge year last year. We have about 300 volunteers that helped us put on this event. We couldn't do it without them. And I think half marathon walkers is probably around 300. We had about 2,200 runners this year in the half marathon. So it's a big, big deal. I received so many thank yous and posts to Facebook about how wonderful the island is. It's a little hilly, but it's beautiful. So we received a lot of great feedback about just the views and how wonderful the parks look. So it was a pretty good turnout.
Great. Council, any questions?
Bruce, do you mind sharing your time with the council and the world?
It's a lot.
I was really proud of him. He did a fantastic job.
The time isn't the finish. It's the finish.
The city's time is great.
Two hours flat.
You did a great job.
He did great.
He's a participant, yeah.
And one last question, if I could. How much was raised for the charity?
You know, I'm starting to say I don't have a specific number right now. I can definitely get back to you on that. Kurt Nakayama, who is our accountant on the event, is trying desperately to wrap up his tax season. So I'm sure we'll be having numbers early next week. I just didn't want to be being an ex CPA. I didn't want to press him for numbers right away, so... But I think we did well.
On this side, anything?
You know, I will say one thing. With any event like this, I think another sign that it really goes well is, we don't hear any complaints. I mean, we don't hear nothing. And that big of an event, you know, around the island, that's huge. So I want to compliment you. You must be doing a very good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope? Good. We'll see you next year.
Thanks so much.
Great. With that, we'll close appearances, and we'll move on to the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of March 7th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moved and seconded.
And I just noted, one of the votes, we took multiple votes and multiple amendments on the affordable housing issue, and one is listed as 6-1. And as I recall, somebody wasn't here, so it should be 5-1.
Yeah.
I was thinking about you.
In the desert.
And Ally, I think I just caught, these are actually the minutes of March 21st, correct? Not the 7th.
Yeah. That was a mistake on the agenda.
So the motion should read March 21st. Right. Okay. With that change, any other? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, let's move on then. We have the consent calendar. It's the payables and payroll. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, Ally, we just have a quick discussion on accounts payable. I don't see what section page it says. It's not that too critical that you know what page it is. But there's a museum-quality framing. It sounds like we did a frame for something, and it sounds like the vendor was museum-quality, which is, I believe, off-island. Just to remind you that we have a framing store here on our island to consider them if we're doing such things.
Absolutely. We don't have a local purchasing policy, but we always try to remain as aware of that as we can to make sure that if the prices are competitive, that we try and buy home first.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving on to regular business. Agenda Bill 4625, Island Crest Way. And we have Ann is already ready to go.
Tell us something we haven't heard before.
Well, let me tell you a story. Aunt Tina House has been City Engineer.
And we're, I'm back again to continue the discussion for Island Crest Way corridor. And I bet you guys are getting very tired of seeing me because I could be doing a lot of other things tonight. But these, I only have two slides, and I'm going to go through them really quickly because I know you just want to talk about this again. Little history. About a year ago, we were working on the Island Crest Way project, and council on March 1st authorized staff to proceed with project design and to advertise for construction bids. We went out for bids, and due to some bidding anomalies, we came back to you on June 21st, if I get the dates right, and asked you to reject all the bids and authorize staff to go forward and rebid the project, which you did. So thank you very much for that. That same night, though, on June 21st, during your adoption of the Transportation Improvement Plan, the 2011-2016 TIP, you unfunded the 2010 Island Crest Way corridor project by moving the $650,000 that was softly reserved in 2010 for that project, and you moved that to the 2011 Residential Street Program. At the same time, you reinstated the Southeast 42nd Street pedestrian signal portion of the project, of Island Crest Way project, and you added a pedestrian signal at Southeast 47th. And at the time, the estimated cost, the planning level cost, was $225,000 for that project. You also reduced the residential street budget from $480,000 in 2011 and $471,000 in 2012. So there was a lot of action during the TIP discussion. Most significant was the unfunding of the Island Crest Way corridor project. So then, at the beginning of this year, during your annual planning session, we discussed, or staff brought forward, and we discussed possible modifications to the Island Crest Way resurfacing project and how we could move forward with striping Island Crest Way to three lanes. And during that discussion, you had asked that staff evaluate some options and then bring those back for continued council discussion, council input. And that's what we did last council meeting on March 21st. So we continued the Island Crest Way corridor discussion, and we, I, presented five options for council's consideration. At that time, you opted to take two of those options totally off the table, and then you asked that two additional options be evaluated and brought back for further discussion tonight. And the upshot of that conversation last week was that really no decision on how to move forward was made. Conversation was tabled until this evening. So I'm here tonight to ask you for two things. I'm asking for your input on which, if any modifications, should be made to the Island Crest Way resurfacing projects. And then if you decide that you do want to make modifications to those projects, which of the options that are identified in the agenda bill best meet your priorities for doing that? That's all I have.
Counsel, I want to add one sort of not-so-fine point. Staff needs the council to make a decision on this tonight. We can't prepare a TIP for April or April...
May.
May, the first meeting in May, second meeting. First meeting in May.
May 16th.
May 16th.
Is the TIP, first TIP discussion.
And there's a clock ticking on that because the state requires us to have an adopted TIP by a date not there long after that. So we do need you to try and get to a decision.
Okay. With that, thank you, Ann. Questions for staff? Yeah, Mike? Nope?
Jump into it? Yeah.
Okay. Ask a question.
Okay. All right, Ann. Thanks again for doing all this great work. And I've got about three more options that I've cogitated over. No, I'm just kidding.
I already know. Now we're going to work.
Number those six, seven, and eight?
We're not redesigning.
Option six, seven, and eight.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, goodness. Well, let me just cut right to the chase. For option five, it sounds like you weren't too crazy about it based on the way you wrote this agenda bill. And I appreciate your diplomacy. But tell me why option five in your mind would not work? Because it seems to me that there's a way we can kind of cram this in and get everything done in 2013.
The...
So the reason, as you may know, my interest is in trying to minimize the amount of disruption. So to what extent we can not have two overlays in two separate years, it seems to me that that would be a good thing.
You know, yes and no. The advantage of combining two phases into one is you do have a much larger project. And I might back up and say, some people might think that's an advantage, and other people might think that's a huge disadvantage. It's, staff's view of doing something like that is that it's more of a disadvantage. And part of that is because it is our, it is our artery down the center of the road. There aren't many options around a construction zone on Island Crest Way. And if we have that entire stretch under construction during one construction season, we feel pretty strongly that we'll have a lot more unhappy commuters than we would if we phased it into two separate years.
So, Ann, how long would it take roughly to do the overlay and then the reconfiguration?
I believe...
Because this is what I was struggling with.
Right. I believe that Clint is thinking that if an overlay is started in, around the 1st of July, his target is to have the paving complete, the resurfacing project complete before school starts in September. If we combine both phases into one, he may still be able to accomplish that. But what that will mean is there will be more crews working on Island Crest Way at a variety of locations in order to accomplish that than there would be if they were just working in a single phase. So that's sort of our thought process behind why we like the resurfacing in two different phases, in two separate phases, separated by a period of time. If we combine both phases, we definitely have a staffing issue.
And that's the program manager position that you lined up?
Yes. Yes. In the street fund, in the years, well, in this year, and in 2012, and in 2013, if everything, if what's programmed in those outer years gets accelerated, so that one phase of Island Crest Way, if it gets accelerated, it puts a huge burden on our single street engineer. So we would absolutely have to hire someone to help manage that workload for that given year. And then you have the additional impact to the water utility because we have a water project that's scheduled in advance of that Phase Two. And again, if we accelerate that resurfacing phase, we have to accelerate a water project, and we have to hire staff to do that because we can't, we have one utility engineer, and she can't manage all those projects.
Right. But given that, though, you still come in under the other, well, seconds of the cheapest option. So I'm assuming that the total cost includes the cost of the two program managers?
If you look at all of the options, there's only a small difference, I think, between the total, the total project cost amongst all of the options. The bigger, the bigger issue, the bigger, our bigger concern is that if you accelerate the second phase, then you go negative in the street fund by a pretty big amount of money. And it will be very difficult for us to reprogram or reshuffle projects in order to make up that deficit. So that's, that's why that's just, that option is just not out there as our top or our favorite.
Now, at our last meeting, when we were discussing this, one of the ideas I threw your way was, could you go to bid with both? Could you go to the bid community with a two-phase project and also bid out a single-phase project? What was your discussion about that? And, you know, would there be some merit in continuing to do that based on what we decide tonight?
And I do apologize because there was one piece I wanted to check in with our attorneys on and didn't do that. But that being said, I think one of the biggest drawbacks to doing that for this particular case, we would have to have an escalation clause in... doing that for this particular case, we would have to have an escalation clause in that bid. I would highly doubt that there are any contractors who are going to bid a paving project and honor prices for two years, just because of the volatility of oil prices.
So with the two-phase projects, you would go to two separate bids then as opposed to combining them into one package? Is that the game plan?
I mean, if we combine the projects, if council really wanted us to combine the projects but look, look at the phases as two different schedules, bid them at the same time but two different schedules, we can do that. We need, we would need to tell the contractor that there is no guarantee that both phases would be constructed in the first year. And as a result of that, you can expect that they're going to want price escalation clause in their contract to be able to recover the costs if oil prices go through the roof, you know, whatever it is that they're going to do. The other, the other piece that I'm not certain of at this point, but seems to be, but is more of a, I think, a standard practice and Katie may have to, Katie and I may have to have a conversation about this. I don't think that we can bid a project if we're not 100% certain we can pay for that project when we're bidding it. So I can't--
The state does that all the time.
Well--
Trust me.
We're not the state and I don't want to be the state. But I, you know, it's really difficult for us to go out and bid a project because there is an understanding or a belief that by doing that, we have the money to pay for that project.
Oh yeah, no, I understand. So maybe a point of clarification. So if we look at option one, for instance, we're going to do the overlay in 2012 and then second phase in 2014. So what, what I'm hearing you say is you're going to have two separate bids for that project?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. And looking at the various options and the impact on the street fund, what I'm seeing is that it doesn't have, regardless which option we pick, it doesn't have any impact on the other projects that are in the budget in the street fund? Because it appears that the adjustment, given whichever option is chosen, that it's, the changes in the end fund balance and not in any other project? Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Thank you. Questions? Mike?
More of a comment. I was just real impressed with this chart on page five, Ann. It's an excellent way to organize the information and very clear for me in evaluating the different options with all this, all these different variables. So, well done and I'd like to, excellent template for going forward when you have those many variables.
Well, thank you and I would love to take full credit for that, but this was Patrick's, Yumashda's brainchild.
Okay, Bruce?
Well, I would echo Mike's comments and my thanks to Patrick then for that. And with that, I would also move that we authorize staff to proceed with a revised scope and schedule for the Island Crest Way resurfacing project as described in option two.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And, Ann, thank you very much. I actually was doing a sidebar here with your boss and also noting this graph. I think this is a great template.
I gave you credit too.
Okay, okay.
What it says is us, us simple minds. When you put it, you know, in visual form, we do a lot better with it, so.
Patrick, if you're watching, nice job.
I'll remember that for next time.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Discussion.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
At the end of the motion, add the words, "And include paving from 86 to Merrymount as a 2012 bid option." Someone seconds that, I will--
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment.
All that is, is giving us the opportunity to let staff get the numbers for what would effectively be option three and see if there's a good economic reason to accelerate part of the paving and somewhat in line with what Mike Grady was referring to and try to achieve some economies of scale. But I think that's an easy bid option to secure as part of this project, as part of the bid.
Are there comments?
Bruce? Well, I would ask, if I recall, Ann, the plumbing work is all north of Merrymount and so this wouldn't impact the utility project if we were to do this, or is that not correct?
That would be correct. That, all of the utility work is to the north of Merrymount, so anything from Merrymount south is, can happen in 2012.
Okay.
Okay, so Dan, do you have it all the way to Merrymount or do you have it to 40th?
To Merrymount.
Okay, all right, great.
If you go north of there, you end up--
I know, that's what I'm saying is, I was just looking at the number two option. Okay, I got it. Right, this is it. Yep, we're not doing that one.
And then, one more question. Ann, from a staff perspective, the amount of extra work that that creates for you, is it significant? Is it, does that push us into problems with needing project management help if, if we add that portion to it?
No, that, adding, adding that piece should be fine. It'll be a little extra work for Clint to manage, the consultant who would be doing the resurfacing design, but the design for any three-lane option has already been completed, so it's a small, be a small increase.
Okay. So with that, I would be supportive of that amendment.
Okay. Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, it passes. Now we have, the main motion is amended. Do we have any discussion or other amendments?
Yeah, I think, I'll just make my quick speech again. As obviously you all know, I've been against this project from the beginning. We're making a major change to the main, almost the only north-south arterial on the island and it's risky and I think even most of you who are supporters of this road diet program will acknowledge it's, it's an experiment. And if it's an experiment, it may not work. So it seems to me the more prudent approach we should take on this, if, if a majority of this council, and seemingly there is a majority on the council, wants to go forward with this project, ought to do it on a phased basis and not try and do it all at once, just based on the fact that it may not work or may not work as envisioned and if you go all the way, you're stuck with it. And notwithstanding, a number of you have assured me this is reversible, I don't think it is reversible without a great deal of expense. So I would encourage you, notwithstanding having adopted that last motion, to take a two-step or a two-phase project here and split it up in 2012 and 2014 because it is risky.
Any other comments? Mike?
Well, as many of you know, I've supported ways to reconfigure this but have looked at various ways to reduce the costs. And fortunately, we were able to get some grant money to help pay for a large percentage of it, so that, that was helpful coming from the Transportation Commission. But, you know, we frequent this freeway often and it is, by all intents and purposes, a two-lane road anyway now, since we put in the craziness at Merrymount intersection. And to the point where I find that I have to kind of muscle my way into the left lane as I'm coming up the hill by Mercer Island Presbyterian to get in the left lane, otherwise at peak hours coming home, I have a very slim chance of getting in there. And there's been many a time when I haven't been able to do so. But seriously, you know, looking at other least-cost ways to fix this problem, lowering the speed limit, putting a median strip right through the Merrymount intersection, which would preclude certain turns, apparently did not meet with resounding approval by some of the people that live around the intersection there, not to mention the school district. So given all that, you know, I do want to find a way to make this a more efficient throughput freeway and I mean it really, it's really our only main road where we can get people through fairly quickly. And given the performance now, I anticipate it's going to be much better. And I only base that on experience and working on other transportation projects across the state where the state and many local governments have gone to this configuration because of the problems that we currently have with Island Crest Way. So I do agree it's a bit of an experiment, but it has been, like many experiments, experiments have been tested out in many other jurisdictions and it's proven to be fairly successful. So I anticipate that it will be here and because of that, I'll support option two, although I still really like option five.
Any other comments? Ann?
I would echo a lot of what Mike said. I think we've all talked this thing to death many times over and it's, it's spent a lot of time, not only on, by the council but by staff and also by the citizens group that was involved in this and as well as a lot of public testimony that this council took over the last couple of years. With everything that I think we do there, there's some question as to whether it will be successful or not. Clearly, we had similar questions when we went forward with the community center, when we acquired Luther Burbank Park and in many of the projects we've done in the city. So far, we've been fortunate that we've generally guessed correctly and I think this will be another one of those situations where, once people have an opportunity to travel on this and see how a three-lane option works and realize that you do get a turn lane which is desperately needed on parts of Island Crest and we are going to have pullouts for slower vehicles, I think people will realize this is a well-thought-out project and will be a successful one. So I look forward to hopefully make having this as a final vote that we can now move forward and, and get this thing off the ground.
Any other comments? Mike?
I think I'm going to be a minority here. You know, I've also looked at this in depth and I think we're really pushing the limit on what the two-way left turn lanes or road diet are capable of and that's what the data shows. So keep in mind, our ADT, our daily traffic count is, has been recorded as 19,300, 19,300. And so I look at the '06, 2006 report on this type of road from Department of Transportation and they say, however these road diet conversations can significantly affect the operation of roadway if the ADT of the roadway is greater than 70,500 vehicles. Another report from the Highway Safety Information System, however, for road diets with ADTs above approximately 20,000 vehicles, there is a greater likelihood of traffic congestion that will increase to the point of diverting traffic. Again, we're at 19,300. And then another report, PowerPoint here from the University of Minnesota, who were very key in promoting this type of design, but they recommend that the assumption is that the volumes are less than 17,500 to 20,000 VPD. Again, we're at 19,300, our traffic count was 19,300. So I think we're taking a very expensive gamble on this design and I hope I'm wrong. I hope it all works out, but it's not something that I want to nor will I vote on. And also keep in mind, you know, we are promoting, or this council has made policies, or let me rephrase that, the GMA has directed us to increase growth here. Like I said at the last meeting, almost 3,000 additional more folks than what we have now. Again, last decade, we increased 600. The GMA wants us to improve 3,000. And consider that in that 19,300 number. And to hit home real close, as you saw in the paper, the Stevens property came up and, you know, you're talking about large property with a lot of folks, which will increase the, the number of cars that, and will surely exceed what the studies suggest is advisable for this design. So I wish that we, although I'm not going to support, I hope you do it as efficiently and quickly as you can.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I unfortunately missed the last meeting. I did watch it on MITV, not just once, but twice. And--
Over a fever.
But I, I'm back to the basic, which is, right now, we're voting on, on these options. It's a resurfacing and repaving plan that we're voting on right now. The three-lane, four-lane configuration was decided before, so it's an overlay project. We're not digging a tunnel under Seattle or anything like that. It's, it's pretty straightforward. I believe option two is the best. It's less expensive than all but one. I believe it's the best option for drivers. It does the striping all at once, so people can get used to the striping. The overlay is done in two phases, but it's, it's flexible in that if the, if the three-lane around Merrymount isn't quite right, that can be redone very easily with just paint. We, we can get used to the, the striping all at once and then make changes if necessary once the second overlay goes on and make more adjustment. It's, it's safer. I think it's time to get on with it. I was looking back in some old newspapers from 2007 and it was already being discussed then. It's high time to get moving on this project.
Comments, Bruce?
Well, you know, they say it's the northwest way to talk issues to death and I think the proof of that on this issue is the fact that nobody in the audience for the last two meetings has had a word to say about this topic.
Right.
That's right. So we have, we have talked this one to death. I just would, you know, reiterate, L, I'm making my speech to go with your speech, you know, you labeled this a risky experiment. And back in the mid-'70s, Seattle changed Del Ridge Way from a four-lane to a three-lane. It was a road that carries about as much traffic as Island Crest. They, they changed it and have never looked back with that. They've gone on and changed more than 25 other roads. And out of the 25 that they've changed, zero have been changed back. So it was a risky experiment probably back in the '70s when Seattle did Del Ridge Way. But after they did that and they did the next one and they did the next one and they did the next one, it ceased to be a risky experiment. It becomes something that's self-evident to others. And I think it's time for us to make that move and I think we're going to end up with a, with a happy outcome on Island Crest, one that our citizens really like. And to the point that's been made, if indeed I've got that wrong and it needs to be changed back, it's a striping project at that point and I will eat my words at that point. Eat your stripes.
I would just echo with Jane and Bruce, I think that, you know, this community is really sensitive to change and the amount of change that you put forward. This is going to be change. We understand that. There's going to be a shakedown period. I think if it doesn't work, as Bruce said, you can change her back, but I'm anticipating that. And the one thing that really is compelling, if you remember all the people that came here, the night that we put the zones on the island, when they were over here and they told us which zones they came from, clearly the people between 53rd and Merrymount told us, "Safety, safety, safety, safety." And they were upset with the people in my neighborhood in the south that were going way over the speed limit through their neighborhood, causing, to put their kids and their pets and everyone at risk because of that behavior. We're still over the speed limit driving down Island Crest Way. So anyway, I think out of respect for those neighbors and to try something to improve the safety on that corridor is well worth the risk of the change and I'm going to support this. Anyone else?
Okay, seeing none, we have a, Ally, do you want to read the motion as amended then?
The final motion will be authorize staff to proceed with a revised scope and schedule for the Island Crest Way resurfacing project as described in option two, phased overlay to 86, full three-lane configuration, and include paving from 86th Avenue southeast to Merrymount as a 2012 option.
Bid option.
Bid option.
Bid option. Okay, is that good? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, can we see the nays? One, two. Okay, so that was a five, two. All right. Thank you, Ann, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready to do the other portion of Lake Line by any chance?
Not yet.
No. That was a strong no. Okay, well, that ends our regular business. Let's move on to other business. We have council member absences.
I think, Jim, we were going to have some comment from the chief at some point.
Oh, excuse me. I forgot all about that. Chief, actually, Rich, would you please bump the chief up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask the chief to come up for just a minute and give the council just a bit of information that you don't have on a series of crimes that occurred on the island and some good news.
Yes, so, good evening, for the record. Ed Holmes, your police chief. And City Manager Conrad said I'll just be brief, but I wanted to give you an update. I'm sure many of you have heard or read in the news, uptick, a significant uptick in some car prowls. We've had some robberies and some burglaries, and I'm here happy to report that a few nights ago, we arrested an individual who is connected to, I can't say all of them, but a good number of these crimes we've experienced. We have developed probable cause, and the patrol officers went out and arrested him. He's an island resident with a long history of felony crimes, so he's not on the street right now, and we're working to piece all the moving parts together still and put the cases together, but happy to report at least that much of it to date, so I wanted to present that to you.
Great. Thank you, and thanks for your good work. Okay, with that, we're going to go on to council member absences. Any absences to report in the near term?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be absent for the meeting on April 25th. I'll be over in Boise.
Okay, anyone else? All right, the planning schedule and...
You already have me down absent May 2nd, I think.
Yeah, I was not here April 4th.
And you're still, May 2nd, you still are planning to be away.
May 2nd. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's move then on to the planning schedule.
Mr. Mayor, as has been discussed at our last planning session, the Tent City ordinance is up for a minor change, and having had numerous discussions with our city attorney and our city manager, what I propose is that we acknowledge that and see to what extent we can move that. Instead of keeping it in June, move it into May. And, L., if you're going to be gone on the May 2nd, what I propose is we'd see, Rich, if we can address that issue on May 16th.
In terms of scheduling, yeah, your message earlier today, I looked at both dates, and I can make either of the two May meetings work, but there'll be some juggling around, not least of which I got a June 6th meeting, as you'll see here, that needs serious juggling, so...
What minor changes are we talking about for the benefit of the rest of us? Yeah, the key provision that is providing a bit of angst for the clergy as well as Sharewheel is the provision that we're asking to do warrant checks. That's not a minor change. That requires public testimony. That requires going back to the Planning Commission. I don't understand what you're talking about for May 16th, then. There's a process we have, and we did not put that on the planning schedule during our planning session, so there's no basis for doing that unless four people on the council in open session vote to put it on the planning. Well, Dan, that's what I'm proposing. So, the process would be that we, tonight, make a decision to put it on the schedule in May, and then staff go back and bring the changes to us. It goes to the Planning Commission, then it comes back to us for approval. I don't believe we can do that without putting it as an agenda item. You're asking for a vote of the council on a substantive matter to address the, to make an amendment to the agenda, and this was not discussed at any point in the, at the planning sessions. I don't understand that.
Let me tell you, timeout. We've been talking about doing this, and Katie, you might have your help on this. What I, what we're planning is to bring it forward, and basically, at that, in May, that's when the question would be asked if four people wish changes for future action. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, they're not, at this point, for the May 25th, it's not asking for staff work, it's not asking for anything, it's the discussion to where we go next. Is that correct?
I'd like to make a couple of comments here. Dan, to your point, you're quite right, it wasn't addressed to the planning session, and for a very good reason. It was my expectation it would be, because that's when we decide what to put on the agenda, but it wasn't because of pending litigation at that time. Otherwise, we would have discussed it and went or not to get on the work plan. The other point I might make is, you're quite right to suggest there's a process here, it's just not one city council meeting, but clearly, I guess it does have to go through the Planning Commission. But my question on the process, then, is, are we prejudging this in terms of whether or not, before we even go through the, begin the process and before the Planning Commission's even weighed in, we're making a judgment about whether or not we're going to agree to a change or not?
Let me see if I can help us. I think we've added an extra meeting, and I think I wittingly or unwittingly helped in that. If the council would like to put on the council's work plan to, you know, add a revision, a potential revision of the Tent City ordinance, you could decide that tonight. It's not deciding whether or not you want to vote for it or not, it's whether or not you put it on the work plan. If you put it on the work plan, then that gives staff direction to go do the staff work, to prepare it. It'll go to the Planning Commission, and then it'll come back to the council with whatever recommendation the commission does. You don't necessarily need a separate council meeting to review the idea that is being discussed, because the idea is still going to have to be vetted through the whole process. So, you could make the decision tonight whether or not you want to add it to the work program or not, and that's what I was trying to tell Mike, that if the council wants to do that, you want to give us the direction, you could decide that tonight, but staff cannot go forward and do any more work on any potential changes to the ordinance until we have four council members that say, "That's a piece of work you want us to be on."
We don't even know the nature of the work. That's why we have planning sessions for it. That's exactly why we meet twice a year, and we have lengthy discussions on what we want to put on the work plan. It's not something which is done in a five-minute session. I mean, that's not the way we do things. And if it was an emergency, if the sky was falling and we had to do it, that's one thing, but this is something that is going to take a long time to get through. We have a planning session in about 60 days. I don't understand why we don't go through the normal process. I mean, if this is any other issue, L., you'd be screaming bloody murder at this one, and you know you would. I mean, this is, let's try to be consistent on this.
Could we discuss it at the next planning session?
Well, here's the issue, is the churches are not in a position to invite Tent City here until this issue is resolved, and Tent City is not willing to come here until this issue gets resolved. And so, I think, you know, we owe it to give us our best shot at trying to fix this so that we then have an opportunity to set out the invitation. So, that's why I'm asking to move it from June into May, given that we've got a window of opportunity in terms of work with the city attorney's office, because we're through the Shoreline Master Program piece of it, at least for now. So, we have the ability to be able to get our piece of it done, then hand it over to the Planning Commission and let them do their due process with the public.
Katie, I know that you've had contacts with Ted Hunter, the attorney with Sharewheel's, and what is, what is your understanding of the situation right now?
My understanding of the situation is that, and with all due respect, Councilmember Grady, that they're not displeased with the current ordinance. They found it to be middle-of-the-road. He was, Ted Hunter was quoted in the papers finding it middle-of-the-road as compared to the other ordinances that are out there, that they don't want to take the charge on it, but that there's no offer outstanding from Mercer Island churches to come to the city. They're not in need for it, but I'll tell you that my understanding from him was that they don't have huge heartburn over it or don't feel that they can't come to the island with the ordinance as it now stands. I just spoke with him last week quite extensively.
I think, Mike, and then Mike, did you...
Well, I mean, from what Katie says, I don't see the urgency in this, and keep in mind that you deviate from process, and, you know, it's a double-edged sword, and we've got a responsibility to respect the public process, somewhat at times, the painful public process, to get to the point where we are now, and to circumvent what we've gone, what we've done, your, the council opens itself up for a lot of criticism that's unnecessary.
Well, let me be real clear. No one has circumvented the process, and Katie and I have held firm to the one-hour rule, to the point of it being very difficult, quite frankly, to really make any changes at all, and she's, you know, held the line as I have for that very reason. And all I'm asking of my colleagues on the diocese tonight is the willingness to move forward with the changes. I haven't made, we, you don't have changes in front of you, but what I'm asking is a good faith effort on three of my colleagues to say, "Yes, let's put it on the work plan in May, and yes, let's go through the due process," which we have done before.
Okay, other comments? So, it's been proposed to put the Tent City on the May 20, is it the May, excuse me?
Sixteenth.
May 16th planning session. If I can just see kind of hands of those people who would like it there?
I'd like a little bit of clarification. There's a different twist to this, in that this has been a agenda item that we've gone through the public process and that we've taken a vote on. So, Mike and I, because we didn't vote for this ordinance, really can't participate in that vote, can we?
This is not a vote on the deal. All what you're doing now is voting on the scheduling matter. We're not voting on substance.
We're voting to bring a, an issue that the council has decided upon, we're voting to bring that back. So, by procedure, the two of us can't participate in it.
I think I know what you're talking about, Mike, and actually, you can, but what it'll require is at least, if I got this right, Katie, one of the council members voting in favor of the ordinance to agree to have it be rediscovered.
Which, since it passed the first time, I think that would happen by default.
I think that would, yes, that would naturally happen if there are four of you that do it, but yes, you could participate. You just need one of the people that voted the last time for the ordinance to agree to have it be discussed again.
So, really, the opt, the issue is whether we talk about it in May or we talk about it in June. That's what it's come down to.
Well, I think, I think you're right, but the first thing is we have a proposal for May, and then if this fails, I would assume that I'll ask you about, talk about it at the planning session.
Well, when you're putting together the agenda for the planning session, you make that decision yourself. Eventually, you and L. make it based upon what everyone tells you.
With what you guys want. I mean...
Actually, right now, it's showing up on June 20th, and if you decided to move it to June 18th at the planning session, you know, you can go either way. But right, I did, it is teed up on June 20th at the request of L. and Mike.
But it's actually quite different having it on the 18th versus the 20th, because if it's on the 20th as regular business, then you're asking, we're asking staff to do work in advance of that to bring it to us?
Yes.
As opposed to if we bring it to the planning session, there's no preparatory work.
Yeah, there's, we were still, there's a certain amount of, several hours of work of drafting that Katie needs to do, to actually give language for you to take a look at, and then if you say, "No, not interested in that language," then you tell us where you want us to go, or just say, "Stop." Or, you say, "Yes, we're generally okay with the direction this is going, send it to the Planning Commission."
My two cents worth would be that, having heard Katie say that this really isn't a burning issue, and noting that the time differential is quite small, I'm happy sticking with having this be a planning session topic and fitting into our normal course of, course of events rather than coming out as a special.
Okay, so...
Can I just make a pitch on the timing, because it has to do with workload, and Katie and I had a discussion about this the other day, and also the public process, to what extent we can front-load this before people head off on vacations for the summer, I think would be a good thing, and thereby guarantee more public involvement. So, that's the other reason I'm trying to move it out of, from June into May.
Any other, excuse me, any other comments? Okay, can I see hands of those who want it on the May 16th agenda? Can I see your hands? Okay, that fails now. The second one was on the planning session. Who would be willing to have it put on the planning session agenda for discussion? See your hands? Okay, so it's on the planning session. Okay, great, thank you. All right, board appointments, we have...
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of other questions on the agenda.
Sure, please.
I just would like to final wrap-up on that, and the understanding the council has, the city attorney now and I have direction to do staff work to prepare for that. This is going beyond the one-hour rule.
That's what I'm hearing. You had more than four votes, okay?
But what you have is four votes to...
To have it at the plan, but they have to prepare for that meeting.
Do some staff work.
Right. Background.
You'll have a discussion based on that staff work to decide if you want to go any further or not.
Right.
Right, but just consistent with the way we've done it before, what you bring to the planning, what you bring to the planning session are concepts. You don't bring a drafted ordinance.
That's correct.
You're just bringing concepts, and we decide then whether it goes through the public process.
That's correct.
Okay, we're all, we're all there. Okay, good. Mike?
Just a couple, Mr. City Manager, a couple, the transit parking feasibility study, I saw that didn't make the cut this time. It was on last agenda. It's not on this agenda. It was on May 6th.
I think you're referring to the results of Mr. Perisir's work. Is that, I think that's it, and that actually, we will be talking about that at our next meeting.
And I see the senior advisory meeting on June 6th, and boy, would I appreciate if Councilmember Grous would be there also.
While I was on vacation, it looks like the staff was busy at putting everything under the sun on June 6th, so I will be making some adjustments.
Don't you want to invite all the seniors? I mean, I didn't hear an invitation.
And then the last thing, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, was our Public Safety Subcommittee, you had issue, we need to get that thing back going. It was my feeling or understanding that that was going to be on the agenda to start moving forward on that.
After your message today, I drafted up a draft charter for the committee and then called the mayor and asked him, "How do you want to take this next?" And I think we're going to bring it back, put it on the council's agenda, and discuss it. Okay, so...
It's in, actually, it's in progress right now. What we're doing so everyone understands, it's kind of a relook at the original intent of, and then looking at the charter, cleaning it up, getting input from the chiefs, and seeing what our needs on the council, and after we've got a crisp document, then we'll proceed forward. So, that's what, and it's in process now.
And so, I guess my question, then, is, we're going to decide whether, how, when, and why for a public safety committee, and wouldn't it make sense, once, you referred to a crisp document, whatever that is...
Crisp. Lucy, how's that?
Would it make sense to have a study session, which is a little more informal, where we can kick around the whole idea without trying to wordsmith a written charter?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be legislated. It's a real good idea. We'll do a study session.
Okay? The sixth, great. Okay, and also, the intent of this, and I have to do it, is what the intent of it is, but boundaries and roles and responsibilities need to be ironed out and be respected, and that's what our goal is on this. Okay? So, anything else? Okay, council member reports, starting on this side. Jane, you want to tell us about the desert tents and camels and...
Desert, ah, it's a great time. But I did attend, along with Bruce, the ETP meeting last week, and there's a Metropolitan King County Council Transportation Economy and Environment Committee meeting taking place this Tuesday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the community center. One thing I'm finding, that with these regional transportation meetings, it's really great to live on Mercer Island, because all the meetings, so many of them happen right here in the middle of everything. There's also a joint sub-area meeting, April 3rd, 11 to 1, also at the community center, where folks from all the communities around and all the agencies will be in present, so... So that's really all I had.
Great, thanks, Jane. Dan?
Nothing.
Al?
Nothing on terms of supports.
Okay. First, Mike? Nothing? Mike?
Just two things. I've been appointed the governor's EV task force, so we've got a meeting tomorrow to talk about ways to mobilize, pardon the pun, EV infrastructure across the state, and...
EV?
Electric vehicles. Remember that? No, sorry.
I started her DVD or something.
Yeah, I'll give you the DVD on the EVs ASAP.
Or ED or something like that.
Yeah. The second thing I wanted to mention is, on Thursday, we've got a forum at the community center on climate issues, and both Bruce and I, as well as James, who's done a great job putting together a lot of the data with Glenn, thank you, Glenn, will be making presentations on the fine work the city has done in the energy and water conservation arenas, and there'll also be a really good speaker there from University of Washington talking about the state of the science on the climate change. So again, it's from noon to 1:30 at the community center.
And later in that afternoon, a Mercer Island teacher is going to be, I think, recognized for really good work along those lines. I will amend that a little bit. James will not be there. He's on his way up to the top of Machu Picchu right now, so he'll miss it.
But I thanked him for doing all the work. So text him on that, would you? Congratulations, Mike. Well done. Bruce?
Well, and, nice segue, Mike, because on Thursday afternoon, we, of course, we're going to have this climate meeting at noon to 1:30, but then at 6 o'clock, we have the joint council school board meeting, at which the results of the Carbon Challenge will be announced, and so you should all be looking forward to that. And in advance of that, at 5 o'clock, we're going to have several different electric vehicles outside the community center for folks to check out. Police bicycles, I believe, might be there, so you could even hurt yourself if you'd like, and just be a general, general chance to see what Mike's up to here with trying to bring EV to the state in the microcosm of what happens here. And I think I understand that dinner's at 5:30, so you could probably get some food and then ride a bike with one hand while eating with the other and really hurt yourself. So I, but I welcome everybody to be there at 5:00 to check out the electric vehicles and all. Oh, yeah, and...
And you'll be sharing the road with an electric vehicle, on your electric bike.
Yeah, well, yeah, so for those who didn't catch the beginning of the meeting, come April 26th, also to the Road Safety Forum.
Great.
So, Ally, is that right? We're going to get fed?
Yes.
Okay, and I've got one thing to report. I attended a very interesting meeting on Friday. I was invited there, and they had the representatives from Puget Sound Regional Council, City of Seattle, Bellevue, a couple of the Eastside cities, who else? Anyway, it was very interesting, it was the Seattle mayor's office, and it was all about a initiative now to, due to population increases, to give one additional seat on the policy boards, transportation and the policy board of the Puget Sound Regional Council to King County. And who should be, if they do that, who should be the appointing board of that? And so that's in discussions right now. It's fascinating, we'll see how that shakes down. Lots of politics. Fascinating.
You mean, who to be appointed?
Who would be the appointing body?
Oh.
And then the appointing body then would decide who that would be. And also, this week, something I've been working on that's really coming along quite well, as I mentioned to you, it's the beginning of the year, we started the mayors of Lake Washington, and we meet just informally once a month, and it's on the 14th, and we talk about kind of things going on, and we're going counterclockwise around the lake. And this one will be quite fascinating, because it's going to be ramping up to the tolling and the impacts of those communities, the Point Cities and Kirkland and all those, and kind of see what's happened. And Richard Conlin from Seattle's there, and so I'm sure he's going to be talking about the tunnel. And we have Fred Jarrett representing King County, and so it's a good little group, and it's quite informal.
What about the mayor, Seattle mayor? See...
Actually, the Seattle mayor is going to be alternating between Richard Conlin and the mayor, so there always will be either the council president or the mayor will be at the meeting.
You know, Jim, when you mentioned mayors of Lake Washington, to me, it sounds like a coffee table book.
It is. But it, in a calendar, oh, that's scary. You got your Luge outfit, I'll borrow that, yeah. But, but the interest of it is, it's a, basically, it's an interest-based discussion, so people can just talk what's going on in their community and how things are affecting them, and no decisions are made, no votes are taken, it's just a great little forum to talk. So I just want to keep you informed, and it looks like it's got legs, and it probably will continue long after I'm gone. So it's a good little group. So with that, I'm done. Anything else? Good at cause? Nope? Okay, we're going to now retire to the executive session to discuss property acquisition persona to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101B for, and I think I want to go 30 minutes, and then if we need more, I'll come on out. So we'll, you'll see me then at 20, or 10 till.
Jim, I have a comment here. This is about potential real estate acquisition, and that's, makes, meets an exception in the Open Public Meetings Act and allows for executive session, because it's about real estate acquisition. That makes the executive session legal. My question, though, is it appropriate, because this is a fundamental political issue, whether or not we go and talk and make any kinds of, have any discussion about acquiring real estate. And clearly, it makes sense to have executive session when you're talking about negotiating strategy or price for real estate. I don't think it's appropriate to have an executive session when you're only talking concepts and ideas about it. And we'll see whether we get to the issue or whether it is about price or negotiating strategy, but just because it's allowed under the Public Meetings Act doesn't mean we need to have an executive session, is all I'm saying.
I hear you. And out of respect for that, I, we did cut down the time on it, and we'll see where we are. So with that, we'll excuse ourselves, and we'll be back at 10 till.